Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, February 19, 2013 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the court to call the roll, please?
Sure.
Here.
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 Thank you, Biddy, very much.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers. I have two things. Number one, I would like to simply introduce and welcome our new deputy city clerk, Margaret Boyer. Biddy, welcome. Great to have you. Congratulations, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Item number two, I'd like to, we have a very special guest this evening, and I'd like to take a moment to introduce her and ask her to come up. State Senator Julie Morrison, who was recently elected, is our state senator, and she's here tonight to say a couple of words. Senator, welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to just come and introduce myself, some of you I have met, some I haven't had a chance to speak with yet. I want you to know that I come from a background of local government. I was the township supervisor in West Deerfield for 15 years, so I did represent western Lake Forest. Now, the 29th district has all of Lake Forest in it, so I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to working with everybody here and your special issues. I'm going to be serving on the Environment Committee, the Education Committee, Human Services, Veterans Affairs, and Appropriations, and I think those are all, those are committees I asked for, and I think they reflect the interests that I heard over the past several months across the district. So I hope you will reach out to me if there's issues that you're particularly concerned about, things you want me to know about, or things that I might be able to, you know, to do on your behalf. I know Mr. Kylie has all my contact information. I'm happy to come back for meetings or to speak with you individually. So, thank you very much, and I really look forward to working for you. Thanks.
Senator, thank you very much for coming tonight, and we look forward to working with you in the future as well. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure, your first, to introduce the external affairs manager for Commonwealth Thetis, James Dudek, who I think the council knows comes annually to give us a report on how things are going in the ComEd system in the city of Lake Forest. So, James, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to the city council for inviting me in today. As Bob has indicated, ComEd has prepared an annual report for the city, for our performance within the city of Lake Forest. The annual report is actually, this is year 2011, the new, the new report that we have, the 2012 data will be out probably in the springtime, late spring to early summer, as we're compiling the data now for presentation. So, for the, for the report that I've, I put together today, I put an agenda together. I'd like to review some reliability report for 2011. 2011 and 2012, I put some electrical system improvements. 2013, for, for what we have teed up for, for this year, for electric grid modernization work, some storm restoration improvements that the company has made, and finally, some new ComEd communication channels. So, the first, first slide I'm showing here is what we refer to as our SAFI index. And SAFI is a, is an acronym that basically is, is our scorecard for the interruptions. These are the, the System Average Interruption Frequency Index. So, when you look at the chart on the left there, SAFI, or the interruptions on a frequency basis, we've gone with five years of data here. If you, if you look at the far right-hand side of that first chart on the left there, it indicates 2011, which was a challenging year for us due to the weather and all the storms that we had. The numbers that you see on top of that bar there, 2.74, that, that indicates with all the storms, everything throughout the year, on average, 2.74 times each resident of Lake Forest received an outage, which is a very high number. But when you, when you take a look at the impact of the storms, and it's kind of like the lighter shaded area, if you, if, there was two, two major storms throughout the year, which was June 21 and July 11. When you exclude those, the SAFI index comes down to 1.87. System average was 1.57 for, for us. So, it was, it was, it was a challenging year again for the company, and a challenging year here in Lake Forest also, as outages affected the, the community. On the right-hand side, we take a look at SAFI, or the Frequency Index without storms. And if you look on, on the far right-hand side, it's, it's 2011 is the year there, 1.44 is the index, or the value for, for Lake Forest. System average was .85. As, after storms, the system usually reacts a little bit negatively because of the fact that there's still a lot of branches, a lot of trees, a lot, a lot of residual damage that wasn't apparent when we were out there the first time to fix. Consequently, it inflates, or it causes subsequent outages down the road. Second slide here is KED. KED is our, is the duration index for our customers. So, again, similar charts, if you, if you take a look at 2011 on the left, KED with all the storms, on average, each outage, each interruptions, 610 minutes to restore. Large, large number, but due to the effect of, of, of the damage, and some of these storms went multiple days, 610 minutes was the, was the metric here. If you take away the major storms, it drops to 155, and, which is a little bit more reasonable of a number, but yet still, still high, but given the impact that there was a total of 14 storms throughout 2011. On the far right-hand side, if you take a look at KED non-storm, 111 minutes on the average for, for an interruption, 89 minutes is the system average. Little busy slide here, but here we illustrate the interruptions by cause. And if you take a look at the purple shaded columns there, again, kind of busy, what it illustrates basically is tree-related outages and weather-related outages. For 2011, it was about two-thirds of the cause of the outages. So, again, a lot of weather-related issues causing, driving, is a driving factor for the outages. What did we do in 2011, 2012 for improvements? We took a look at our worst 1% performing circuits, and we addressed a reliability performance on one of those circuits in 2012 that was within the city. Distribution automation, these are the smart switches that ComEd are, are installing. It's kind of like a self-healing type of switch where the, the switch recognizes when there's trouble, and if on one side a switch to trouble is, is apparent, it'll switch to the, to the second side to restart its customers. Storm hardening program, identified three circuits in 2012. URD cable program improved two circuits in 2012. Reliability program work improved the performance of eight circuits in 2011 and two circuits in 2012. Cyclic inspections were completed on five circuits in, in 2011, and 16 circuits in 2012. And then routine tree, tree trimming was performed on 26 circuits, which is all the circuits within, within the city totaling about 119 miles. As, as we get into some of the, some of the fixes that we did with reference to that first, that subsequent, the previous slide, I should say, our circuits are designated by, by, by the nomenclature you see there. C046Y is a circuit number. At that particular location, there was trip savers installed. There were some new electronic fuses installed there, some bypass disconnects. These are all equipment there that helps, helps increase the reliability of the system at that location. Distribution automation, two distribution automation devices were installed on that same circuit, Charlie 046Y. Then we got into some storm hardening categories here, where there was a tree-resistant spacer cable that we installed on another circuit, approximately 3,544, 35, 3544 feet of spacer cable on that circuit, 641 feet of that same cable on a different circuit, some trip savers on these, in the next three circuits. As you get into the next category, the underground residential cables, it's kind of the important cable that serves the communities on the residential side, 675 feet in one location, around 1060 Lake Road, and another 3,675 feet around 1,000 Heavenwood Lane. Nice, nice part of our work that we did in 2011 was right in the downtown area, around Illinois McKinley in Washington, there was 4,000 feet of cable that we, that we replaced to help increase, increase the reliability of the area. The trip savers that we talked about, these are devices that are kind of like a smart fuse. Instead of it absorbing the short circuit and then waiting for someone to come out from the company to replace it, these are, these have the ability to reset themselves. So, we're, we're putting these fuses in where, where they make sense. There's some limitations to where you can put them, so you can't just blanket the area with these. They have to be street accessible because the, the size of them. Spacer cable that, that picture on the right there in the middle, it's kind of like a tree-resistant cable. It's a kind of a diamond-shaped setup, which it allows the, the branch or the tree limb, as it makes contact. It's an insulated cable, and it actually will bounce off the cable, and in some instances, it will absorb the shock of the, of the tree without having a sustainable outage. URD cable replacement, this is just our brand-new cable that we're setting up and we're installing in town. This is replacement of the cable that basically is in the underground residential areas. I'm not going to go into everything here, but within 2013, for the second and third quarters, what we're planning to do is, I think there's about 19 jobs here, we're going to replace over 48,000 feet of cable in the, in the URD, in the, in the residential sections of town. Some more of those jobs are illustrated there. Storm Response ComEd has done a lot for enhancing various different storm responses. We've, we've increased our storm response and technology improvements. We've also improved communication channels. And finally, as we get into the social media aspect of things, ComEd is now communicating via Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. So, that's a quick summary of, of improvements within the village, excuse me, within the city. We'd be happy to take questions.
Any questions?
I've got a couple. Those auto reset breakers you're putting in?
Yes.
Years back, there was an unfortunate squirrel that spanned across the fuse to my overhead drop, and it blew the fuse and blew the squirrel. And so, these auto reset breakers in an instant like that, you wouldn't, I wouldn't have to wait for a truck to come out and reset the, the fuse. It would automatically reset once the short disappeared?
In some instances, some of these fuses are protected now with wildlife protection. So, in that, in that situation with the, with the squirrel, if the wildlife protection is, is, is doing its job, the, the resettable fuse will eliminate the need for someone to come out there. We call it a trip saver. It's a trip-saving fuse. So, in other words, it, it has its name, or derived its name from the fact that the utility doesn't have to make a trip, you know, saves a trip out there to, to reset the fuse. It's, it's hard to say, I can't guarantee that, you know, in the same situation, if the squirrel or wildlife got in there somehow to, you know, wedged itself in there, it may not affect, it may destroy the piece of equipment, but it's, it's engineered not to have that happen and to save the trip.
Another question is, does ComEd have the ability with the state-of-the-art equipment to actually reset a breaker or transformer remotely? So, let's say there's a lightning strike or a surge or something that trips, trips a device, can you reset it remotely, or do you always have to come out?
We could reset the breaker at the station, at the station level, which is the, the long feeders, the, the primary wires that you see running up and down the streets. Those are called main line feeders. Those are controlled via SCADA or electronics, electronic means with either telephone or fiber optics. We're not at the transformer level, you know, to reset those, or at the, at the individual customer level. So, when you get below, when you get out of the station and, and you, and you start to, the lines start to travel down through the neighborhoods and the community, we install, you know, of course, the breaker at the station, but then these other smart switches that I mentioned, they're strategically placed along the route so that, in the old scenario where, when you had a breaker and, and you had a line that went through the neighborhoods, that may have taken, maybe had 1,400 to 2,000 customers on it. Right now, what we're doing, and the, the plan is, with the Electric Modernization Act, is to section off that, that main feed so that there's no more than 400 customers affected. And then the switches start to communicate with, with each other so that if there is a problem here, everybody, everybody on this side of the, of the, of that problem area will still stay in power, and also on the other side, just isolating apart. Thank you.
And just a quick comment. We've got our share of good-looking squirrels and fur-sword, too, but I wanted to thank you, there was a project over by McKinley, Illinois, and Washington Streets that truly neighbors of ours, residents swore would never get completed within our natural lifetime, and you guys couldn't have been greater in getting it done. And it was really a message to the people in our ward that there can be communication with ComEd and we'll get things done. So, I, I just appreciate the efforts that were put out to get the problem resolved in that, that area.
Well, I thank you for that. It was, it was, it was a great effort. I thank the city for, for their assistance, Bob and his team, at the, at the city level, at the staff. We all worked hard, the, and many meetings, many, many conversations with the, with the customers in that area, but it, it was nice to see it all come together and all the agreements getting signed and finally getting it installed, so.
That's appreciated.
Thank you.
On the subject of communication, I would sing the praises of the alert system you've got, where I can get messages. If the power goes out, it'll come on, estimated time it's coming on, and it's available for anyone with a cellphone. Very useful. But my, my recollection is during the big storms, the problems, a lot of the problems that occurred were because ComEd wasn't communicating with itself, that the crews that were supposed to take the tree branches off weren't letting the electrical people know we've got them off, and vice versa. And so, there were things that were there, that just stood there for days, and nobody knew that it wasn't being serviced. What have you done to improve that situation?
If I may, just refer back to a couple of slides here. Storm Response and Technology Improvements, you know, right now, we've installed GPS systems in, in auto trucks, so we, we know where the crews are. There's, you know, there's a control, a control panel there that illustrates where, where our teams are working. We've increased the number of first responders by 20% to, to improve the assessment stage of, of a storm, you know, when, when the storm just gets through. We built a regional mobile command center, which was, will be deployed when the worst of storms hit, hit the area. Also, and not to go through the whole list there, but what we've also done is we've, we've worked better to, and we're more cohesive as a unit with our tree trimming and tree vegetation groups, so that they become almost joined together as they, as a patrol area so that you're not seeing a ComEd personnel show up and say, "I can't do anything because we need a tree crew," and then another four, six hours go by before a tree crew shows up. So, we're, we're trying to get the resources together in, in the strategic areas of town. Unfortunately, there's, you know, there's not enough resources always to attack every problem at once, but we're, we're trying to be more strategic so that we're not kind of cross and pass through, through city streets.
James, as a follow-up to Aldman Palmer's question, could you talk about the response that ComEd, along with working with municipalities and the ICC, putting together the emergency response plan, if you will, that was developed in late 2011, 2012? Because not only was ComEd not talking to ComEd, they weren't talking to local municipalities. So, I know Northwest Municipal Conference took the lead on working with ComEd to come up with a new plan, so you might want to just touch on that for a moment.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, briefly, as Bob indicates, there was a, there was a, an effort, and there was a, there was a request that ComEd start to communicate better, not only internally, but also get that message out to the community. So, there's a, there is a, a protocol that we follow now, and we refer to these, to the protocol as a joint operating center. There is, there's a number of these joint operating centers throughout the ComEd system. I think there's a total of 17. What happens is when a community, or one of our operating centers, and, and Lake Forest here is within our Libertyville Operating Center, when the, the outage reaches, outage numbers reach 20% of everybody within the Libertyville Operating Center for three consecutive hours. We, we team together with auto municipalities within the, within the Libertyville, Libertyville Joint Operating Center via conference call, and we're, we start to, we start to tell them about the statistical outages that are occurring, and that we're going to open, or we want to open up a joint operating center, so that we can then engage more directly with the communities on restoration of critical facilities, and, and, and to put our resources in the direction of where the city needs them most. And that goes for all the communities within, within the joint operating center. So, it's a kind of a strategic surgical strike, you know, once we reach that threshold, to get, you know, our, our resources pinpointed to where the city is asking us to, to deploy resources. And then, then it also allows for the remaining, the remaining part of our work groups, you know, to work at the same table with, with city representation or municipal representation. So, if you, if you would envision a room like this, you would see probably two or three ComEd people working just strictly on the Libertyville damage. There'd probably be a municipal, one or two municipal people there, and they would be communicating with the rest of the communities, feeding that information into us. We would be taking that, feeding it into our control center, and deploying resources where they make sense. So, something new, we actually deployed, after the 2011 storms, in the western suburbs, DuPage County area in 2012. Storms hit pretty hard, so we actually deployed and activated a JOC. Worked pretty well. You know, we still had a few things to, to iron out there, but the overall, the overall thought and protocol worked very, fairly well. Communities were happy, county was happy. It was just a great partnership working together.
Hopefully, we don't have to activate it in 2013, though.
No, no. It's not, it's not one of those things you wish to activate.
That's right.
But it's good to have, be prepared for.
My recollection was that one of the issues we ran into was you had a crew that was borrowed from another utility, and a tree trimming crew that came from out of the area, and you guys didn't have a way of communicating with them or between them. You know, so they would be sent on assignment, and I actually heard neighbors, stories from neighbors about some of these out-of-town crews, where they would get an assignment, they would go and finish their assignment, and they'd sit there for four or five hours waiting for the next thing, and, you know, kind of hanging around the neighborhood. What steps have you guys taken to improve your ability to coordinate the outside crews that you bring in, in these kinds of storm situations?
A good question. A lot, a lot of work has been done in that arena. Just a few of the improvements we've made. Our electric system is, is comprised of various circuits. Circuits, the circuit lengths are miles long. We refer to those as feeders. A feeder is a circuit. So, when the storms hit, and we've got these feeders, our, we, we know that these feeders are out of power. What we are, we are beginning to assign a management, assign a management SPAC or single point of contact to coordinate all the activity along that feeder. We refer to that person as a feeder SPAC. So, that, that person will have the main control of that feeder. And, and the other part of the, the problems or the issues that we had back in 2011 was that we have to maintain safety at all times for, for anybody working on the system, not only public, but also our workers. So, as we had so many workers working on the system, trying to, making repairs, we needed to always communicate back with the control center to have command and control of the system, so that somebody at one end of the circuit wasn't livening it up unknown to the other end. It does cause, it causes for, for, for some lapse of time between crews, because then you're, either you're not getting to the dispatcher to get the necessary clearances, or to explain to them what you want done, or there's just, you know, there's just too many, back in 2011, there's just too many phone calls coming into the control center. We've expanded the control center so that when we run into problems with storms, many more dispatchers are available. They section off the, the system strategically so that you don't have one dispatcher. Looking at the whole Libertyville area, you might have a half a dozen dispatchers looking at Libertyville. So, those kind of improvements, we've, we are enhancing things on a GPS side, even with the foreign crews, the crews that come in from out of town, giving them mobile devices so that we understand where they're at, cell phones, computers, laptop computers. We've, we've really gone to, to a, to a, to a level that we haven't been before. We're, I think we're, we're getting to the point where, you know, things have been tested, and we feel that, you know, we've made good preparation for the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dudek, very much.
Thanks, James.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You remember, at the last council meeting, it was my pleasure to announce to you that the city was the lucky recipient of a 2013 ITEP grant in the amount of about $1.2 million for restoration renovation of our downtown train station. I promised this evening that I would come back and give you an overview, because there's a lot going on, and there's a lot of activity that we're going to see over the course of the next couple of years at the station. This really is a multifaceted project, because not only do we have three independent grant applications either pending or in place, but we also have a number of other activities that are going on in this relatively small space in very important part of Lake Forest. Before I go into each of these individually, I'd be remiss if I didn't first point out the wonderful partnership between the city and Lake Forest Preservation Foundation, because they've been very instrumental and very helpful in getting these grant applications submitted to the appropriate parties at the state or federal government. And also, want to thank the staff, because there's been numerous staff involved in one or more of these, including Karina Walters, Dan Martin, Chuck Myers, and Bob Els, who's here this evening, and I'm sure I'm forgetting two or three other people. We're looking at the current ITEP grant, which really funded the new roof that is on the train station downtown under ITEP I. The ITEP II, which we were just received of approximately 1.2, does some interior work and also finishes up the exterior work, and I'll go through that in a moment. We are a recipient of a small CMAC grant for a bike shelter at the downtown station to replace and enlarge the one that we currently have, but we also have submitted an application for a much broader bike connection grant that is currently pending, and we hope to hear by the end of this year. As well as, we've been in communications with Union Pacific, who has expressed interest in removing the pedestrian crossing at the downtown station. And as the council knows, ever since Northern Trust moved out some five, six years ago, we've been actively trying to find tenants to fill the spaces within the station. The, this is more or less to just orient you, and hopefully, I'll do this without, let's see, which one is the laser? Ah, there we go. Okay. Here is the train tracks, here is McKinley, Deer Path to the south, Westminster to the north. And very quickly, there's three grants that are currently in play. Grant one, which was the ITEP grant, was really to help restore the exterior of both the east and west stations in downtown Lake Forest. The, primarily, the roof has been completed to date. That was approximately $800,000. The balance of the work that's going to be done in 2013 is painting of the exterior. The ITEP II grant includes both the, finalizing the exterior work, which includes tuck pointing, masonry, and some other similar work on the, on the outside of the building, as well as interior improvements, including bringing the bathrooms into ADA compliance, and also some other life safety aspects of the train station. We're very excited about that work taking place, but it probably, because of the work that needs to take place in getting IDOT approval and some other things in place, it probably the interior work won't begin until late 2013, at the earliest, and probably more like 2014. Also in place, as I said, we have a bike grant. We received a grant to replace We received a grant to replace the current bike shelter, which is located at the northeast corner of the station, and move it somewhere else in close proximity but away from the building and also to enlarge it because those that use the station know that in addition to this bike shelter, there's a couple of just freestanding bike racks that are on the east side of the building that will also be removed as a part of that project as well. But in the course of preparing our comprehensive bike plan, which will be coming to the city council, I believe, in the next month or two for adoption, that we were applying for grants to basically make this bike route, which currently runs through three different parking lots, right through the middle of three different parking lots, to relocate it to the west side of McKinley Road. So, and think of it almost from bridge to bridge. Where you cross over the pedestrian bridge on Illinois, you would then, close to Gorton there, go to a sidewalk on the west side of McKinley Road. That sidewalk bike path would then continue all the way up to north of Scott Street to where then it would come back on and cross the bridge going over Woodland Road. So it would remove the bikers and the rollerbladers and all those people that are currently just zipping down the middle of those parking lots out of harm's way, if you will, and move them to a much safer location. Apologize, this is a little hard to read. Actually, I can't even see it from here. So let me look at my notes. But the ITEP I grant, we had received $835,000 from the federal government through the ITEP program. We also, in addition, received $250,000 from Metra and the city's match was roughly $160,000. As I said, about $800,000 of that was just the new slate roof that went on the building and I think everybody agrees looks very nice. The balance of roughly $400,000 is really just the painting of the work. That did not include any of the masonry work and some of the other stabilization work that we felt needed to be done to the building. That was included in Phase Two of the ITEP program, which ITEP stands for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. Phase Two, again, finishes up the work on the exterior, the masonry work that's out there, but more importantly focuses on the interior, cleaning that up, fixing some of the floors, the ADA accessible bathrooms, life safety, fire code components. And this represents about another $1.4 million. As I said, the challenge that we have, and you'll see it here in a moment with the schedule for this work, is that we run this through IDOT. IDOT's great at roads and bridges. IDOT's not great at buildings like this. This is sort of a square peg for their round hole and so it has caused the process, the review and approval process, to take longer than it would normally. But I guess patience is a virtue and I think the most important thing here is, is that last time this station was renovated through the work of the Preservation Foundation, at that time was the late seventies, and I think anybody who has visited the station knows that it is definitely worn and needs to be upgraded and improved. That probably is a little hard to read as well, or maybe it's just my eyes way over here. But basically, the top arrow there indicates that the, we're going to finalize the specifications to get down to IDOT by the end of this month for the painting work. That work will take approximately three months for IDOT's review and approval. We're hoping to move that along and maybe with Senator Morrison's help, we can help expedite that thing before IDOT's review. Because once they approve that, we will then immediately begin the bidding and the bid letting process. So our goal is to start that this summer and have it completed no later than December 1st or certainly when the weather turns in the area. The bottom half of this chart shows the ITEP II grant. We are going to be working with the current architect, Gunny Harbo, who has done all the work on the exterior of the building to help us prepare the interior plans and renovations. That will take place through much of 2013 and hopefully we will get those down to the state by the end of, by the third quarter of 2013. But we probably won't be able to let this project until late 2013, like November, December, and then the work will continue into 2014. Spend a moment on the bike trail. This is a, what they call the CMAC grant, which is Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program. And as I said, we first received a grant for about $59,000 to relocate the bike shelter that's there away from the building, but also to expand it to encourage more people to take their bike to the train and then hop on the train and go to work. In the midst of that, we were encouraged by some individuals associated with the CMAC program to apply for this much longer and broader connection program to make it more safe for those individuals who are going north and south on the McLory Bike Path and get them out of harm's way in the middle of the parking lots that are adjacent to the train station. The total project is approximately, I'm sorry, $1.1 million for this grant alone. So when you add up the two, all three grants, you're looking at potentially about $3 million of work that will be put into this location over the course of the next three years. Now let me emphasize that this second component of the CMAC grant we have applied for, I think you'll see here, we have applied for it, but ultimately, we may not hear until November 1st as to whether we're successful, but we have received strong indications that we will be successful, that this is a very important piece of this bike, McLory Bike Path that many people would like to see improved. And so we've got our fingers crossed that this will be very, that we'll be working on this over the course of the next couple of years as well. Well, I think you have in front of you copies of the actual cost breakdown and the individual components of the grant application. And let me put this one up here. Well, Susan, can you switch to the overhead by chance? And then I'll be killing to make sure I can. All right. If you look up in the top right-hand corner up in here, and I know council members have copies in front of you, you can see the breakdown of roughly the $1.2 million. Whoops.
I don't think we can see that breakdown.
Yeah, right. Soon as I turn away, now it'll go dark the other way, probably.
Getting better.
Yeah, right. I should bring Kathy Cerniak over here. She's a pro at this. You can see the breakdown of the $1.2 million, roughly the $825,000 from ITEP I, the $250,000 from Metra and the city's contribution. The far left-hand column is really the components that are a part of this overall project. And this next column here are the ones that have been completed to date, which total roughly about $804,000, leaving about the $400,000, which is roughly the painting work. I'm sorry. The work that's shown on here is exterior woodwork is really the painting work and some other exterior wood repair that's going to take place. So that was the amount of work that was accomplished in Phase One and will be finished in Phase Two. And then the far right-hand column is the components that will be undertaken in the new ITEP grant that we just received. You will notice at the very bottom of the right-hand column, though, there is still a shortfall of roughly about $234,000. And we're going to be strongly encouraging our partner in this, the Preservation Foundation, to see if they may want to take on a bake sale or two, to see if within the community we can raise the additional $235,000 to completely finish off the scope of the improvements that are there at the station. The second item, or maybe the back sheet to the sheet that you have there, that is the CMAC bike grant. And those are the various components. And I apologize for those at home, this is a little small to see. But that is the breakdown of the various cost components of that improvement to the tune of just over a million dollars to complete that work as well. I am glad that Commonwealth Edison is here because if I go back to, whoops, Kathy, can you switch that back one more time? Anybody who is familiar with downtown Lake Forest and McKinley Road knows that there, along McKinley Road is Commonwealth Edison line, telephone line, poles running right down the center there. That will also have to be reworked. And so part of the plan that's included in here, this timeline, includes working with ComEd to get the poles relocated because where they are currently located is exactly where the bike, the new relocated bike path will be. So part of that conversation will be to see the possibility of actually taking them underground as well so that we remove them from the street scape altogether. So hopefully, that was a quick overview of the project to give you a better sense as to what's going to be going on. As I said, it's very exciting. It's clearly a very important part of our community, but it's a very highly visible part of our community as well. We will try to the extent that we can minimize disruption to commuters, minimize disruption to the people that are in the area. But as you can see, there's going to be an awful lot of work going on in a very tight area over the course of a couple of years. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have about the project.
I have one question. I think it's wonderful, we're getting these grants, but looking at their source, where's the money coming from? I feel like I'm getting a gift from Bernie Madoff.
Well, it's one of those, I guess, don't ask, don't tell. It's interesting because despite everything you read in the newspaper, there are sources of funding, pockets, if you will, related to transportation, air quality that are out there, and those are the ones that we've been able to tap for these grants.
I mean, do they float bonds or, what is the source of their funding? Is it the state of Illinois or some other independent?
It is actually the federal government. These are federal dollars that are just flowing through the state of Illinois. So I can't tell you other than their normal appropriations process in the federal government.
Are they going to be part of this sequester?
Hopefully not. We haven't been told that they are.
It'll just be a 10% haircut.
Yeah.
All right. Wow.
Actually, I heard an interesting statistic recently from a person who would be in a position to know that Illinois ranks 48th out of the 50 states in terms of the relationship between the money that we send to Washington and the money we get back. Which is interesting when you consider that we have a president who is from Chicago. Something's not working there. But maybe some little bit of that trickle is coming back to us at the train station.
Well, you know, I would say that I've heard the same statistic. And I think that when we look at this, while this is clearly a big project for the city of Lake Forest and considerable amount of money, it's a very small piece of, when you're talking about road projects and so forth, that are, you know, 75, $100 million in the state that really have been, I think, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Have suffered most through some of these cutbacks, if you will. But fortunately for us, we've been able to, and I have to give the staff a lot of credit because they're aggressively looking under every rock and every program. And we do get some information from our law firm, Holland and Knight, also about grants that are available out of Washington. So we're constantly scouring what available dollars are out there. And I think it shows in terms of the fact that we have these projects that are ready to go.
If it's from the federal government, it's probably because they're going to increase the tax rates for most of the residents of Lake Forest.
That's right. That's right. These are your tax dollars at work.
Tax dollars coming back to us.
That's right.
So are these budgets, I mean, are these preliminary budgets? I presume these haven't been bid or, I mean, they've been estimated but not bid?
That is correct. These are preliminary budgets based on either our experience or that of the architect, Gunny Harbo. So most of these have been preliminary numbers that we have put together. Some of them, though, are about a year old now. So I think it's going to be a trade-off as to if people are still hungry for work and whether these are competitive pricing, which we've seen on a couple of recent bids, that it's still very competitive in the pricing. But in some cases, I think the cost has gone up of some of the materials, which I think is going to be a trade-off. But the other thing that is difficult, as I said, is working with IDOT because the IDOT staff who are overseeing this are not used to doing these projects. And so they want to treat a building and a renovation and a painting of a building the same way of paving of a road, and that's just not easy to do. And I think that's what takes, takes a little more time to get their approval and review.
It just seems like the contingencies and construction management, I mean, if you add up those two line items on the front and back of the page, it's close to a half a million dollars. I assume that's just leaving some room for maneuvering later?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I will tell you only based on experience, and if Dan Martin was here, he'd probably say the same thing, particularly with the train station. Once you start opening walls and doing some things, you also never know what you're going to find. Because much of the work that was even done back in the seventies was more cosmetic work and not more of the structural work. And so once we get into doing the bathrooms and upgrading the fire alarm systems and the sprinkling systems and so forth, I know he's going to hold his breath and wait till, see what happens because I'm going to guess that that's been a long time since most of those areas were touched.
You have a comment, sir Bob? Questions?
That completes my report. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All exciting news. We'll look forward to seeing both those projects continue through 13 and 14. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Alderman Moore?
I would just like to announce that beginning Thursday, two days from now, we're going to begin the community forums, and I'll be chairing the first one, on a discussion of granny flats. And I thought I'd take this opportunity to say what granny flats are. It's a bit of a nickname that might not be as accurately descriptive as it should be. This is a discussion that we're going to have for information purposes and information gathering in a series of discussions that each alderman will have a different topic on. The one that I'll be hosting on Thursday has to do with accessory buildings and authorizing these accessory buildings on single-family homes for second living units. This will serve and concern at the same time historic preservation. It will lend itself to the diversity in housing as it relates to our master plan. And the discussion will revolve around opportunities and concerns that the public may have. It will not be a televised meeting. It'll be an information gathering meeting to try to put together, you know, some of the concerns, possibilities, and questions that might come up for the public or by the public for the city council to consider and be better informed when these topics come here to, whether we're directing it to boards and commissions or receiving information from boards and commissions, to better prepare us to make these decisions as it relates to the community interests. And I think there's a series coming afterward that'll be published in the.
All right, Alderman, the only clarification I would make, I think you said Thursday, it's actually tomorrow night, Wednesday.
I'm sorry, tomorrow night, yes.
February 20th at seven o'clock at Gorton. Then, following that, it will be the third Thursday of the month at the Gorton Community Center.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Anyone else have their comments by the aldermen? We'll move on. Thank you. Now, an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council on a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda this evening is items for omnibus vote consideration. And we have a few of them. I will read them and then we'll take them together as a group for a vote unless any alderman would like to pull any of them out individually. Items for omnibus vote consideration, number one, approval to renew an agreement for financial and land parcel management, system software maintenance, and licensing for FY 2014. Item number two, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the zoning Board of Appeals, first reading and final approval. Item number three, request for city council approval and agreement for professional services for a stormwater study and a fiscal year 2014 transfer of 0.5%. services for a stormwater study and a fiscal year 2014 transfer of 0.5% home rule sales tax to the capital improvements fund. And item number four, approval of the February 4, 2013 regular city council minutes. The minutes are attached. Do I have a motion for approval?
Well, if I could ask one thing beforehand with item number three, and just discussion earlier today with Mike Thomas, there was some thought that that motion would be subject to the review and approval of the city manager and attorney for the final ordinance, just so there's an opportunity to review by the city attorney, and that would be the proviso.
And by the final ordinance, this would be the approval, you mean the final contract? So, the city attorney and city manager would review and approve the final form of the contract?
Yeah, so long as we make sure that they have the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve?
With that proviso.
With that proviso?
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Sure. Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Novitt?
Aye.
Alderman Pendelion?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Teck?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
That's nine yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, under the section of ordinances, consideration of a recommendation from the plan commission in support of ordinances approving special use permits for restaurants within 150 feet of a residential zoning district, the Westwood Bistro and the 950 Whiskey Bar, both proposed in Westwood Square, 950 Northwestern Avenue. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval. Presented tonight by Kathy Cerniak. And Kathy, before you get started, I want to see how many people tonight are here to speak or are here interested in this item. If you'd raise your hand. I see anybody. I see one. Okay. You'll have your chance if you'd like to, but Kathy, would you go ahead and make your presentation?
Thank you, Attorney Mayor Schoen, hi to members of the council. This matter comes to you with unanimous recommendation for approval from the plan commission. The plan commission heard this item over the course of two meetings. They began their consideration of this item in December. At that meeting, they heard a presentation as well as a considerable amount of public testimony. The plan commission at that December meeting had lengthy deliberations, had many questions for the petitioners, for members of the public, and for staff. And at the close of that meeting, they continued the public hearing but asked that, in the words of former plan commission chairman Reisenberg, that some of the baggage from the site be addressed prior to the following January consideration of this matter. So, between those two meetings, staff was able to meet with the petitioners and, more importantly, the property owners of Westwood Square and begin to address some of, some of that baggage. Two critical elements were addressed up front. One was the operation of pizza deliveries in the back alley, which is immediately adjacent to the neighboring homes, was eliminated, and pizza deliveries now occur from the front of the store, eliminating that use that was never approved in that back alley. So, the neighbors have expressed appreciation for that change. In addition, just this week, replacement of the fence along Woodland occurred, what was a six-foot fence with a number of panels missing, and in fact, in some areas propped up, the two-by-fours has been replaced with a seven-foot fence. So, those items were addressed. This matter did come back to the plan commission at the January meeting. At that time, again, the plan commission considered this item for probably about an hour and a half to two hours. At the end of that meeting, as I mentioned, the plan commission did formulate a recommendation, and I'm going to very briefly highlight the substance of their findings, the aspects that led them to recommend approval, and I'm going to touch lightly on the conditions that they recommended. You do have two ordinances in your packet because this proposal does involve two separate restaurants. The location of the proposed restaurants at the corner of Western Avenue and Woodland Road, this is the Westwood Shopping Center. The Westwood Bistro is proposed for location in the former Burger King space, and in the same development, the 950 Whiskey Bar is proposed for location in the former King Moss space. Just a quick site plan, again, Woodland Road and Western Avenue. This is the development. This is the former Burger King space. This is the existing parking lot with access from both Woodland and Western, has about 26 spaces, more or less. This is the King Moss space. This development is unique in that it's, it has more onsite parking than any other commercial development in our central business district. There is an underground garage that is accessed by a ramp right here. That underground garage has about 60 spaces in it. There is a proposal for an outdoor dining area patio that will be associated with the Westwood Bistro, and that is highlighted here. The plan commission, again, after considerable deliberation, came to several conclusions that they acknowledged that the city's central business district is long and narrow and is at many points immediately adjacent to neighboring residential homes. They recognized that this is an existing commercial development site and recognized that restaurants and bars are permitted uses in the B2 zoning district. This property is zone B2. However, in areas where restaurants and bars are proposed within 150 feet of residential zoning districts, a special use permit is required. The plan commission recognized that a special use permit actually presents the opportunity, in this case, to establish conditions that really can enhance the maintenance of the site and provide regulations on operations that haven't existed currently. Other observations of the plan commission that filling these vacant spaces would support existing businesses, would be consistent with the strategic planning goal of bringing additional vitality to the central business district, and they also acknowledge the availability of parking, which I mentioned. You do have the conditions of approval included in both ordinances. In those ordinances, I think pages four through six include the conditions that are specific to the overall site as well as specific to each use. In general, those conditions deal with the perimeter of the site, talk about not only enhancing fencing and landscaping, but also require ongoing maintenance of those items. They speak directly to the use of the alley so that in the future, it's very clear, it's adopted by ordinance, that that alley is intended for deliveries to businesses. Use of that alley already is limited from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for deliveries. The conditions for these two businesses specifically limit deliveries for each business to three deliveries per day. The conditions speak to exterior lighting, both any future lighting and looking at addressing any existing lighting that provides direct light onto neighboring residences, speaks to establishing parking policies, which the property owners have done. This site, in addition to having the most parking of any central business district development, is also located closest to the remote employee parking, which is located on the east side of the railroad tracks. So, employee parking, employee permit parking is available a short walk away. The conditions limit the operations of the outdoor patio, directing that operations out there end at 10:00, 10:00 p.m., and also direct final approval by the building review board. The building review board has already seen this petition, looked at lighting, the outdoor patio signage, and the modifications proposed to the front facades of the building. A subcommittee of the building review board met a week or so ago on site, and this matter is scheduled to go back to the building review board at its March meeting. The plan commission also identified two issues that really weren't under their purview. The plan commission recognized that liquor licenses are the purview of the city council, so they acknowledged that once the city council makes a decision on the special use permits, that you would then be addressing the liquor license. They also discussed hours of operation. As I mentioned, there is a condition that limits the hours of operation of the outdoor patio to 10:00 p.m. that is consistent with the condition of approval for The Grill, which is located about a block to the north. The Grill is the only other restaurant that is governed by a special use permit because that also is within 150 feet of residential zoning. So, the condition on the patio is identical to what is on The Grill. The code limitations, and I believe I provided this information in the packet, each liquor license does not establish a specific closing time for businesses. The city really has never been in the business of regulating specifically the hours of each and every restaurant or establishment in the community. However, the code does require that all sales of liquor end by 1:00 a.m. There are some exceptions for places like the Deer Path Inn, but in general, the code limitation is 1:00 a.m. and midnight for outdoor areas. So, the condition that's recommended for the patio places further limitations than the general code does. Also included in your packet are hours of operation for other restaurants, and those are the published hours. Those are not hours as set by the city, but their own published hours. We also know that restaurants, depending on the season, depending on the level of business, won't always stay open until their, the hours as posted. Included in your packet is also, I believe it's on page 29, is a list of all those hours, and at the bottom, the proposed hours of the Westwood Bistro and 950 Whiskey Bar are highlighted. I believe the latest proposed closing is at midnight, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday for the 950 Whiskey Bar. One other comment on hours, The Grill's special use permit does include a condition that directs that the kitchen close at 10:00 p.m. That was a condition that was put on that special use permit in response to neighbors. It certainly provides a, some greater parameters, but it's a type of condition that unless there were a complaint, unless there were a problem, it's not something that we stand at the kitchen door and monitor on a regular basis. I do want to mention that the conditions as presented in your, in both ordinances, I have reviewed those with Chief Held, and as we did when The Grill opened. I expect that the police department and community development department would work very closely together as we iron out any issues as, as business opens. We certainly did that with The Grill. We did receive complaints. Today, we don't. So, I think that from an enforcement perspective, it's important that, that you know that there is that commitment on the part of both departments. And finally, again, what you have before you are two ordinances. You do have a unanimous recommendation from the plan commission. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. So, that would be two separate actions. As a third action, also a recommendation, if you approve the ordinances, that you direct staff to come back to you at your first meeting in March with the liquor licenses for your review and approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, I have not really a question, but more, more an observation. It just seems to me that since The Grill is the only other restaurant which requires a special use permit due to its proximity to residential neighborhood, and that, that has the requirement for the kitchen to close at 10:00 p.m. as part of the special use permit, it seems to me that would make sense that these establishments have those same, that same provision, requiring the kitchen.
And that certainly is something that a council could act.
That's just my personal feeling.
I like the hitch I've been that little bit. I mean, I agree with everything, you know, that Kathy reiterated about the positives of this. However, when the plan commission did consider and deliberate this issue, we were not aware of the conditions of the special use permit for The Grill. And we, of course, approved the outdoor dining, you know, to close, to cease at 10:00 p.m. We didn't really, we didn't really have any information about the kitchen closing at 10:00 p.m. And it seems to me, I mean, we cannot give The Bistro a competitive advantage over The Grill. Secondarily, it seems to me that many or most of the issues of the hours of operation that the residents would have would be solved by the inclusion of this consideration as part of the special use permit. So, I would be, I would be 100% in favor of that, Kathy.
Any other comments, questions for Kathy?
I have a comment on the project. I think The Grill on 43 is really nice and looking forward to this being another nice restaurant. And I think with all the comments we've had from the neighbors, I think a lot of their concerns have been addressed, short of not having anything there.
Just one or two questions, and they're more defining, and it is a little unusual because we have a single applicant going for two restaurants, which, you know, in my mind, in a perverse way, it's, you're biting off a lot at this point. Why wouldn't you go for one restaurant, see if it comes along, then go for the second? It's just an observation. But a lot of items could get kind of intertwined, and that's where I want to make sure we're separating the two establishments. As far as the outdoor seating, that's the restaurants. That's not the bars, as far as I could see.
That's correct. At the December meeting, there was some outdoor seating also proposed in front of the, the whiskey bar. That was removed, and I, I think that was a modification that the plan commission found to be positive.
Yeah, because just in deference to the neighbors, where there could be opening panels on the front of the bar, I don't want the bar traffic to spill over to the patio area where there's people enjoying themselves on a warm summer night, which they should, but not in the outdoor area where the noise could carry over to the adjacent neighbors. And if they do shut down the patio at 10:00 for everyone, I just want to make sure they commit to that. Aside from that, it is zone for this type of activity. I'd be in support of the petition with limitation of hours that would be consistent with Laurel Grill.
Any other questions for Kathy? Anyone like from the public to come up and make comments? Seeing none, I will ask council if they have any final discussion points or if anyone would care to make a motion for approval. We do need, just to clarify, we're going to take each individual special use separately. I'd like to have a motion for, to waive first reading separately for each one. So, we'll have a first reading, first reading. We'll have a first reading for the Westwood Bistro and a final approval for Westwood Bistro. We'll do the same for the 950 Whiskey Bar, and then we'll have a separate motion for directing staff to prepare the liquor licenses. So, all that being said, I need a motion to waive first reading for the Westwood Bistro.
So moved.
Second. Biddy, roll call vote, please.
Certainly.
Can I, in, in that motion, if you'd like, you should incorporate the inclusion of the kitchen closing at 10:00 p.m. for both.
And that should be incorporated for the final approval, not necessarily for the waiving of the first reading, but I will provide some language for the final approval on either.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Novitt?
Aye.
Alderman Pendelion?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Teck?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Eight, zero. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Now, we need a motion for granting final approval for the Westwood Bistro project subject to the conditions that.
Subject to adding in Section 3, a condition 10 stating that the kitchen must cease operations at 10:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote again, please.
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Novitt?
Aye.
Alderman Pendelion?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Teck?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Eight, zero. Motion again, carries.
Thank you very much, Biddy. Moving on now to the 950 Whiskey Bar, same thing. We need a motion to waive first reading, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Novitt?
Aye.
Alderman Pendelion?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Teck?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Eight, zero. Motion carries.
Thank you. And now, we need a vote to authorize a special use permit for 950 Whiskey Bar. Do I have a motion to approve?
And is that subject to, is that subject to adding in Section 3F, a new number nine condition stating that the. nine, conditions stating that the kitchen must cease operations at ten p.m.?
Exactly, yes. So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pendelion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Eight-zero, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And finally, we need a motion to approve directing the staff to prepare liquor licenses associated with both Westwood Bistro and the Nine Fifty Whiskey Bar for council consideration at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call vote again?
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pendelion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Eight-zero, motion carries.
Great, thank you, Biddy, very much, and I want to commend Kathy and staff, as well as the Plan Commission, for a very thorough, good job on this one. This is a very, we all received a great deal of input from the neighbors, and it was all very well considered. I think it was all taken to heart, and I think some of the things we've talked about tonight have helped alleviate, hopefully, some of the concerns that the neighbors have. So we'll look forward to two new successful businesses in the downtown and a happy marriage between the residents and the businesses. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter Forty-Six, Section Ten-E of the City Code as it relates to fences in ravines and on bluffs, as recommended by the Plan Commission. Again, first reading and, if desired by the City Council, final approval, presented again by Kathy Serniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, Sean Hyder, and members of the council. At the end of last year, the City Council, in response to a number of calls and concerns you heard, directed the Plan Commission to consider whether the code provisions relating to fences should be amended with regard to fences in ravines or on bluffs. In response to that, the Plan Commission did consider amendments to the proposed, or to the fence ordinance, and presented to you tonight is a unanimous recommendation for some amendments to those provisions that would prohibit fences in ravines and bluffs. Just very quickly, and with the lights on, we can't see too well, but just some quick slides, just showing you different situations where there are fences in ravines. Different types of fences, aluminum, chain link, stockade fences, some fences in not-so-good Historically, staff has worked closely with residents on ravines and on bluffs to meet their desire for security and privacy while also trying not to negatively impact the visual character, the environmental quality, the stability, trees, vegetation. And most often, I think in the future, we've been able to work to a good solution. Recently, there's been a couple fences that have attracted the attention of residents, both in the larger community and in immediate neighbors, in immediate neighborhoods. The recommendation before you really has three parts, and I'm going to speak very briefly to all three parts. The proposed amendment prohibits fences beyond the ravine or bluff edge, establishes variance criteria, and addresses existing fences. Just to explain the first one, prohibiting fences beyond the ravine and bluff edge, the terms ravine edge and bluff edge are already defined in the City Code, and they are defined as the point at which the land first achieves a slope of greater than ten percent. So it's generally at what we would call the edge of the ravine. The ravine area is a much larger area, and it's defined by a line from the toe of the slope to the point at which a twenty-two degree line intersects the table land. This is how the steep slope setback is established, directing where buildings can be constructed. So the proposal for fences is much less restrictive and really focuses on prohibiting fences on that slope as opposed to this greater setback that's required for buildings. So as proposed, from the point at which the land first begins to exceed a ten percent slope to the toe would be the area within ravines and on bluffs where fences would be prohibited. The second point, variance criteria, there is an opportunity to request a variance from any provision of the zoning code. The Zoning Board of Appeals exists for that reason. In the recommendation that comes to you from the Plan Commission, there are specific criteria that would be used to evaluate such requests. Criteria that deal with the stability of the slope, impact on vegetation or trees, impact on natural drainage flows, and impact on neighborhood character or visual character. These criteria would be in addition to the standard variance criteria, which deal with hardship, impact on property values. So this helps to guide, in the event that fences are requested, it helps to provide a clear framework for the Zoning Board of Appeals from which to evaluate those requests. The third piece of the code amendment as proposed deals with existing fences and removal of those fences. It really breaks that into several categories. There is language that establishes a ten-year amortization period for all existing fences that would be made non-conforming due to this amendment to the code, would require that those fences be removed ten years after the date of passage of this ordinance. It would require earlier removal of fences in the case where they fall in disrepair, and would require more than just replacement of panels, but would require some type of excavation into the slope. It would also require removal earlier than ten years if the fence is determined to impede the flow of drainage, since the ravines do serve as part of the city's storm water conveyance system. And finally, it would require removal of the fence earlier than ten years if the ownership of the property changed. The first two pieces of the ordinance, the prohibition and the variance criteria, really are, work together as a single piece. The second piece, I know there's been some discussion, this ordinance could stand alone without addressing existing fences. This does come to you with a recommendation from the Plan Commission to include this. If you choose to do so, let me see if I have anything else. Oh, one other item I wanted to mention is that the Plan Commission, in considering fences, your direction was to look at fences in ravines and on bluffs. The Plan Commission acknowledged that there are other parts of the fence provisions in our code that are outdated, but they felt that there was some urgency in dealing with this issue. Certainly, the Historic Preservation Foundation has some interest in fences, but it's really a larger discussion. So with your direction, we would continue to review the provisions in the code as they might relate to setbacks in height, landscaping of fences, fences in historic districts, seasonal fences, fence materials, whether there should be some limitations. So I wanted to acknowledge that those issues have been raised, and they weren't ignored by the Plan Commission. They were simply set aside in order to focus on the issue at hand. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval in the ordinance, either as proposed or as modified by the council, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, I have one quick question, if I may. How are other communities in our area handling this particular matter?
Lake Bluff, in particular, does have a prohibition on fences in ravines and on bluffs, similar to the ten percent mark. In fact, I think they may actually have a larger area within which they prohibit fences. With respect to existing fences that predated that ordinance, they allow the non-conforming provisions in their ordinance to rule. They do not have an amortization clause that I have been able to find. If a fence falls into disrepair, it could be repaired without needing further excavation, but could not be replaced, so as long as the existing fence remained in good condition.
If we were to pass this ordinance as you propose it, how would that affect current fences in ravines that are already in disrepair, as we would define that? What would the owners of those fences be required to do?
If you passed it as approved, the ordinance would allow the city to identify fences that are in disrepair or are impeding storm water flow, to remove those fences at an earlier timeframe than the ten years.
Is that timeframe defined, or should we consider defining it? In other words, if we pass the ordinance and we identify somebody tomorrow that has one, when do they have to remove the fence or mitigate the problem?
I think that that's something we'd have to work with the city attorney on, what that notice process would be like, what the inspection process, the notice process. Normally, when we find a code violation, which is what those fences would become, if in fact they were in disrepair or impeded drainage, they would become a code violation. Our normal procedure is to issue a courtesy notice of violation, to give a timeframe within which to address that, then to issue a formal violation notice. We also often use our administrative hearing process. Issue citations, and then property owners or violators come before the administrative hearings officer. So there is a process in place to deal with code violations, but we would work with the city attorney's office on exactly how to implement this ordinance if it gets approved.
And presumably, that would be the same process we addressed in the other aspects we were talking about, that the Plan Commission is planning on looking at. So in other words, this is just fences in ravines and bluffs. There's a lot of non-conforming fences in Lake Forest. Inside-out fences, fences placed in front of other fences that are owned by the same people, or the fence is on somebody else's, you know, view. I'm assuming that all these things would tie in together in the process for mitigating these things would all be the same?
They could certainly be considered in the longer, or in the larger review of the fence provisions. Currently, there's nothing in our ordinance, for instance, to prohibit back-to-back fences, but that certainly could be something that could be considered. So if something was made non-conforming, and if the council chose to institute an amortization period, yes, we could address those issues broadly.
Are there other situations where we don't allow a homeowner to fence to the edge of his property?
There are setbacks for fences along front yards. Side and rear yards, property owners are allowed to fence on the property line.
So if somebody has a ravine, they basically have property that's theirs, but they can't keep others off of it using a fence?
That's what this code language proposes, yes.
Do these ravines, are there part of them that are public property? Or does one ravine, I mean, one person's property at the bottom mean another person's property? It's all private property?
In most cases, ravines are privately owned, and the property line runs along the bottom of the ravine.
Is it their responsibility to keep up the ravines, and can we enforce that?
We certainly have had that discussion. We do provide guidelines for maintenance of ravines, how to care for ravines. In recent years, I think the community as a whole has become more educated about how to care for ravines. For example, the work we've done at Forest Park on our own bluff. We've learned that sometimes removal of vegetation is positive. So we've tried to work to educate property owners, but yes, it is their responsibility to maintain the ravines. In cases where the storm water conveyance portion of the ravine becomes blocked, we have gotten involved at times and required removal, or even done some of that work ourselves.
And what's the reason we have a setback where they can't build their building over the ravine? I've seen that in other communities, where you can actually build out. Is that correct, that they can't build out over their property?
Correct. The steep slope setback was established many years ago, twenty, thirty years ago, and it really was established to protect the ravines, because building within that steep slope setback does cause ravines to fail, and we have actually seen a number of those situations in the community. So it really is to protect property and to protect these unique features.
Okay, I take we don't have the same level of concern with fences?
Correct.
Okay.
Fences don't require a frost wall and a foundation. Certainly, they require the posts, but it's a much different level of invasion into that, into the slope.
Have we ever looked into condemning the ravines and taking them for public use?
Not to my knowledge.
Don, I've got, I may have a change of heart here. We reviewed this, we reviewed it quite late. I think it probably got on our agenda about ten-thirty, and I think we all wanted out of there. I don't think anybody, including myself, disagrees with the ordinance. I think it's a very, very, very good ordinance, and it's needed, and it's probably something we should have had years ago. However, after speaking with, the homeowner was not there that night, so there were five or six folks, residents, you know, who spoke kind of against the fencing in ravines, and I think it was kind of overwhelming to the Plan Commission. After speaking with the owner and after seeing some of his commentary, I'm wondering whether that clawback provision or that amortization isn't too onerous, and in some way, sense or form violates my sense of fair play. I guess I'm okay with maybe the thing being grandfathered, the fences being grandfathered, until the property changes hands or is sold. I could even be talked out of that, quite frankly. But the amortization period, just, I said it before, it kind of, it doesn't, it's my sense of fair play. One of the aldermen brought it up that evening, Alderman Cushman. It was probably about five to eleven, and it was like, Jeff, come on, let's, you know, we want to go home. So I don't think it was given fair consideration, quite frankly. So I think I'm flipping on, again, I'm for the ordinance. I think it's clearly needed, and it's properly written, but I've got a problem with that clawback provision.
I actually like the clawback provision. You know, I've given a lot of thought to the number of years, and I was kind of struggling with the ten years. And I don't know where that came from, but I can only assume that our city attorney would probably tell us that it's what's generally considered reasonable. And I think, I know we're not here to talk about any fence in particular, but there have been some fences that have caused this discussion to occur. And I think for homeowners who, residents who find their neighbor's fence to be offensive and to interfere with their, you know, enjoyment of their property, ten years seems like a really, really long time. On the other hand, for the person who's put up a very expensive fence, ten years probably might not seem like it's long enough. So I agree with the provision. I think that one point that I'd like to make is, you know, one of the things we really cherish in this community, one thing that really makes us special, is the beauty of our ravines. It's really unique, and to those of us who live on or near ravines, and probably many of them are in my ward, but to those of us who are used to walking in the ravines, you know, running down, looking at the ravines, who live there and can look out their backyard and enjoy this, it's unique, it's special, and it's something that makes our community a very special community. So, again, that's my thinking. I, you know, one question that I have, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyways, I was wondering if the planning, if the Plan Commission discussed, or what the city attorney would have to say about, you know, giving people financial incentives to remove fences before the ten years. It's, you're probably, Miles is probably going to say that's a really bad idea, but I just.
Luckily, I don't comment on the policy. That's a policy decision for you, and so if that kind of program were something that you would be interested in, it is something that the council could consider.
What if you've got a fence that's an eyesore, and that neighbors are looking out their backyard at the scenery that they used to enjoy for years and years and years, which is why they bought their property, and they're seeing something that's just plain ugly? And you've got someone who's willing to fix that, but who put that fence up at great cost?
It's something, I think the It's something, I think the background for that discussion will have to be whether or not you feel there would be a public purpose for implementing some kind of program like that. But if you feel like there is a reason to offer that kind of incentive to remove any kind of thing, that's something that the council could do. But it's also something that the council can just do through its own regulations as well, without offering that type of incentive because of the public purpose.
I'd like to chime in. Are you finished?
I think so, yes.
I would just like to say, well, you know, some things are legal. I believe some things probably shouldn't be done. I think there's a legal right to put up a fence before we pass a change in ordinance today, but I think there's also a perceived value to every homeowner on a ravine to see the ravine, and to not have the assault of an opaque large fence in their view that wasn't in their view before. And I don't know exactly how to handle that, but I do know that from my years on the Historic Preservation Commission, we really address the character of a neighborhood as one of our standards for guiding our policy. And I think that when inconsistencies were brought up, they were in violation of codes that were designed to protect the character of the town. So, you know, without judgment to those people following the rule of law and the policies that existed, I think there's a lot of good that can come from maintaining a character and not having fences in these beautiful ravines. That's just my opinion. I'm in support of the ordinance with the provisions.
And, yeah, I'm probably getting towards the end of comment on here, but clearly, going forward, I want to limit having any other fences installed in the ravines, and I think as a community, this would be a worthy policy that we should have moving forward. But I have, beyond the view that a person could have, and the fences that we've discussed and the fence that was the object for this really coming forward, is something that's aberrant to me. I don't like it. But I'm not the property owner, and in this case, the property owners have followed city code to the T. They've applied for the license, they've followed every rule that was existent, and they've invested their money in it. As much as I'd like to put my wishes, my subjective views on the property owner, his view is a little different than mine, and that's kind of what makes the world go around, unfortunately, in a lot of cases. But I really am hesitant to force a property owner that's followed city code that's existing to take down a fence, be it in 10 years or during his ownership. He's followed the rules. Why should we be penalizing him? It's a mistake we made. We should have looked towards protecting the community. Going forward, we'll protect it. Maybe it's a monument to keep us, to be a bit more vigilant in the future. I'd like to ask that the council support, moving forward, that we have the restriction on the development of fences and ravines. It's great. But I think the restrictions that would go towards the removal of fences over the amortization time period, or changes in ownership should be deleted. Certainly, if the fences are in bad repair, or there's a need that they impair drainage in some way, plausibly, that we could approve, but otherwise, I cannot encourage it, or I'm not for it.
Even the sale? Even when it changes? Okay. I'd concur with Kent. I think as a general matter, and those who've talked to me over the last 15 years in my involvement in this city government would know, I think our fence ordinance is decades overdue for a thorough review, and I think that needs to happen, and if this is the catalyst for that, then great. I think that ravines and bluffs are incredibly sensitive, challenging places. They have special considerations that are already built into the code, and I think, you know, I'm completely comfortable with the first two components of this as a sort of first step toward a thorough review of the whole way we approach fences in this community. I'm, but I also share Kent's feelings about the clawback provision, if you will. I think that if there's a drainage issue, I just think that provision needs to be thought through more carefully. I think arbitrarily picking a 10-year time horizon, when the IRS might say that it had a 29-year useful life or something like that, is questionable. I think essentially imposing a financial burden on either the buyer or the seller in a real estate transaction, not unlike the real estate transfer tax, I think we need to think about that hard before we impose it. It just seems, I mean, it ends up just another subject for people to argue about when they're trying to make a real estate deal, that who's going to pay? You know, is the seller going to pay? Is the buyer going to pay? And that could be costly. It could be very costly to remove a, you know, relatively new fence that's in good condition. So that part of it, I think we need to, I'm not, I do recognize that in cases where there's a problem being caused, or it's in disrepair. By the way, how do you define disrepair? You know, does that mean the foundations of the fence poles are exposed? Does it mean that, you know, I just think this whole thing, it has merit. I think there are certain circumstances where we should be able to require a fence to be removed, but I think we have to think about it a lot more carefully than this particular clause, you know, gets at. And I think in the context of these other five items, I'd also like to see, I'd like to see a fence and ordinance that required the same kinds of considerations that zoning variations require, in terms of public comment, opportunity for the neighbors to comment on the impact on them. You know, I think personally, stockade fences are a scourge in this community by and large. They're cheap, they're opaque, and they're generally ugly and intrusive, and I think they ought to be used a lot more sparingly. So anyway, that's my little diatribe. I'm in favor of the first two bullets, or the first two components, and not the third.
I have a procedural question and an opinion. Just as a straw poll here, it seems that, without any of us admitting to change our mind, that we would have, just on this side here, she would be for the 10-year, I would be for it, they would be against it. Is it the first person to make a motion, and then, or how does it, how does it work?
But before we get there, I'd like an opportunity to comment.
I'm not trying to make a motion. I just would like to know, are we rushing to make the first motion?
No. No. I'd like to thoroughly comment on it.
On the procedure?
No, on the ordinance.
What would be the...
And then we can get to it.
Well, you make a motion, it's either voted up or down.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Okay. Mike, go ahead.
I've got a lot of thoughts on it. The first thing I'll say is I'd like you to all consider we pass a moratorium for 90 or 120 days on any future fence construction, or any kind of hardscape construction in the ravines or bluffs. And it'll become clear from my comments why. But I've got an assortment of comments in no particular order, so the first one I'll make is I'll rewind to your question about the 22 degrees. The steep slope setback ordinance that we have has its origins in soil engineering. There's an angle of repose that soil engineers will tell you is an angle where you can rely on the soil to be stable, and if you go beyond that, you're building in unstable soil conditions, which could cause deterioration rapidly of a ravine or a bluff. Why do we care if somebody hurts their own bluff or ravine? Illinois Road is the best example. The property we just vacated at our last city council meeting, there was very significant soil erosion over there, and it spreads. It spreads to adjoining properties. So I think as a public body, we've got an obligation to protect our natural resources. And ravines and bluffs, as many of you commented, fall under that category. You know, years ago, we used to put Band-Aids, L.A., and baby oil on ourselves. Now we're putting sunscreen on. People would smoke in public places, now we have ordinances prohibiting that. I'm the staunchest defender of personal property rights, real estate property rights, the staunchest defender. But I think we're at a point in our society where we realize the bluffs and ravines are precious, and you have to balance the right of a property owner to get value out of the use of that ravine or bluff versus the public interests. So I think one of the first questions we have to ask is, do we want to permit any kind of hardscape, fences, whatever, on those ravines or bluffs? And arguably, I don't think we should, unless it's an engineered hardscape down there for the specific purpose of preventing further erosion or deterioration, bolstering a cave-in, let's say, or opening up a water course that's collapsed. So I think that's one thing we have to ask. There's, this ordinance needs a lot more thought, deep thought. Personally, I don't care for the variance mechanism. If we think fences are bad for the ravine, why would we grant a variance? I don't think it's, I don't think we have to do that. There's language about non-site obscuring. If we limit fences, if we prohibit fences in the ravines and on the bluffs, and we bring them back to the crest of the bluff, or that 10% grade, where's Kathy? The 10% grade change. Cliff Miller, at your plan commission meeting, talked, I think, very articulately about that. A property owner can put a fence, whether it's a stockade fence or a wrought iron fence, why shouldn't a property owner be able to secure the privacy of his own backyard? Stockade fence at the bottom of the toe of ravine doesn't do that. So personally, as much as a lot of you commented negatively about stockade fences, if a property owner wants a stockade fence to secure privacy, so people can't look into his backyard while he's out there sunbathing, I don't have a problem with it. If you want to require, they've got to put soft scaping around it, so the neighbors don't have to look at their stockade fence, or looking at arbor vider, whatever, that's okay by me. But I don't know why the non-site obscuring would be critical if we prohibit fences from the ravines and limit them to the crest or edge of the ravine, like Kathy proposed. I don't want to be specific about the property that brought us to this ordinance tonight, but you can't help but be, because at your plan commission meeting, almost every public comment was a direct assault on that specific situation. And I want to be careful how I say this, but I don't know that we had to issue that permit. I was involved personally assisting a friend and a client eight, 10 years ago, wanting to build a fence along the Skokie Drainage Ditch. And our city engineer said, no, I'm not issuing the permit. It's an 100-year floodway. It was a water course. And he made some real good points, and we ended up putting a picket fence that allowed, you know, floodwaters, if they occurred, to flow through the picket fence and back down. You know, the city may have had an opportunity to prohibit this, which brings me to even a bigger picture, because we've been here before, where we've had ordinances that we think are good ordinances, and there are holes in them. And if there's a hole in one of our ordinances, I think we need a mechanism whereby our permit department can say, oops, Mr. Kylie, there's an issue here. Somebody's applying for a permit, the situation is such that our ordinance will permit them to do this, that, and the other thing, and it's probably going to raise a lot of hair and draw a lot of attention, and immediately get it to the city manager and staff, and maybe even the city council. And maybe we could have headed this off at the pass, and the fence would have been built differently, and to this particular homeowner's liking nevertheless, but all parties would have been, would have been happy about it. So that's why I think what we ought to do is do a moratorium tonight. Consider a moratorium, go back to the, go back to the ordinance and revisit it. The amortization, I can tell you, a stockade fence lasts a lot longer than 10 years. I've had them, I've got dogs. I had to replace it after 17 or 18 years. And how do you, how do you tack on an amortization period to a guy who's got a fence that's already 19 years old and ready to fall down, and now you're giving him a new lease on life, whereas his next-door neighbor's got a fence that's one year old, and you're giving him a 10-year lease on life? There's all sorts of inequities there, which you guys have touched on. That's pretty much the sum and substance of my comments, other than, I would like to know, before an ordinance comes back to us, how many houses do we have in Lake Forest that are situated on either a ravine or a bluff? And of those, how many of them have hardscape, like a fence or a building down in the ravine or bluff?
Thanks, Mike.
I'd like to address this, if I could.
Go ahead.
I'm against the ordinance. If there weren't a ravine here, there'd be no question, you have the right to put a fence up to secure your property and to secure the view from your neighbor. I don't think a person has a right to look into his neighbor's backyard. I don't think he has a right to walk in his backyard, and people who walk in the ravines are trespassers. I think you have the right to secure it. I don't know, I mean, if it makes sense, if you maybe have a dog or something, you'd want to do it, but I think the principle is, it's your property, you have a right to secure it. And as far as the view, well, nobody has a right to see into your part of the ravine, it's your property. You could plant bushes or trees that would obscure it, so that's a red herring. And I think if we really want to prevent our ravines from private uses, we should condemn them and take them over. But otherwise, I don't see where we get off regulating other people because their neighbors want to look into their back, what is in effect, their backyard. And so I don't think it's a wise ordinance, and if we're going to go that way, that we want to turn our ravines into some sort of resource. And by the way, I would say any fence that is put in would have to not imperil the ravine, but I really didn't hear anything tonight that said putting a fence in will imperil the ravine. If it's done right, it won't. That's a red herring. It's just people don't like the sight of them, and I can understand that. You kind of like a ravine, it's a scenic thing, but it's still their property. So I think it's a very bad idea.
I'm going to, given the lateness of the hour, I am going to ask, is there anyone here that would like to address the council on this matter? Please come up, state your name and your address, and if you can, if you can keep this to three minutes or less, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I will absolutely try.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Devon Dalair, and I live at 261 Bluffs Edge Drive in Lake Forest with my wife, Robyn, and my daughter, Sarah. As a resident of Lake Forest, I sincerely believe that the retroactive provisions of this ordinance modification, I think, set a very troubling precedent. I think while every community has the right and perhaps the obligation to help define, set, create ordinances to help define the look and feel of their community, I think to apply those ordinances retroactively, in my opinion, is overreaching and somewhat dangerous. And I think it really undermines the ability for people to form reasonable and reliable expectations for land use. And the following narrative is just a very brief, very personal case in point. When we began our home search in Lake Forest, one of our primary objectives was to find property that had enough containable land for both our pool and our dogs. And after first seeing 261 Bluffs Edge, and we fell in love with the four-and-a-half-acre property, however, we were very concerned that since two-thirds of the property was either bluff or ravine, that containment would be very challenging. And so due to that concern, we actually decided to walk away from the property, and we said, well, we're not going to buy it. And then over the next few months, we did some research, and we checked with the city's fence ordinance, we spoke to some contractors, we spoke to some fencing people, and based upon our research, we were somewhat pleasantly surprised to learn that this was not only possible, but it was somewhat feasible. And so based upon that information, we decided to purchase that property. And so it wasn't just an investment in a fence, it was actually an investment in that property to live there. I can honestly say that if someone had come to us and said, don't even think about fencing, it's not possible, there were plenty of other properties in Lake Forest that were beautiful and that would contain our three dogs, and we would have loved. But that's the reason why we picked that. As far as the fencing plan, we actually spent considerable amount of time on that fencing plan. I know a lot of people say it's ugly and everything, and I appreciate everyone's comments, but we were trying to accomplish a number of sort of goals. The first was to satisfy the requirements of a pool fence. We have an in-ground pool, we need a fence per regulation. Two, provide containment for our dogs. We have three dogs. One happens to be a whippet mix, and if you know anything about whippets, they're incredibly fast, and they have an incredibly strong predatory drive. So once they get hit... So, once they get a hit of an animal and they start chasing, they don't stop. So, an invisible fence does absolutely nothing to contain a whippet. Third, to keep out natural predators. The increasing number of coyotes in the ravines certainly gave my wife and myself cause for concern over the safety of our dogs. And then, finally, a point that was mentioned was that we felt it was necessary to mark the person, to mark it as private property. There happens to be a right-of-way easement located along the northern border of our property, and although this easement is specifically for the exclusive use of Bluffs Edge subdivision, which is approximately 20 homes located on Bluffs Edge Drive and Circle Road north of Wesley, it is frequented by a multitude of people who live neither in our subdivision nor in Lake Forest. In our short time here, we've encountered numerous strangers who thought our property was a public beach, and on more than one occasion, we've encountered people as they walked up from the ravine onto, into our backyard. And as a husband and a father of a 16-year-old daughter, having a fence to indicate private property gives me considerable peace of mind. So, after carefully considering these goals, we initially selected a wire mesh deer fence. That's what we initially sought to do. However, we were told that that does not satisfy, would not satisfy the requirements of a pool fence. So, we were considered the option of a wrought iron fence or a wooden stockade fence. Well, since the wrought iron fence is roughly three times the cost of a stockade fence, we went with the stockade fence. As for the placement of the fence, the original suggestion from the fencing contractor was to place the fence directly on the walking path that's on our property, effectively enclosing the path within the fence's boundary. By placing the fence on the path, we were told that it would minimize impact on the existing vegetation, maximize ease of installation, and simplify the maintenance. But our immediate reaction was, no way, this would clearly be infringing on easement rights. But then, we were informed, and we later verified, that in fact, that walking path does not intersect with the easement. In fact, the walking path is between five and 15 feet into our property away from the easement's border. That notwithstanding, in an attempt to try to be considerate, we left the path unenclosed. We left it outside the fence's boundary. However, by placing the fence as close to the path as possible, we felt that we still minimized the impact on vegetation, simplified maintenance, allowed, you know, very little impact on erosion, all of that. Once completed, I sincerely believe that our fence represented a reasonable balance between our needs for containment and the impact upon the environment and our neighbors. So, when our family made the decision to purchase 261 Bluffs Edge and build our dream house, we made the decision to invest a significant amount of time, energy, and of course, money into the property. And I feel that we made this decision based upon a reasonable expectation of future use. This expectation was not based on guesswork or intuition, but on a careful evaluation of the building ordinances of the city of Lake Forest. Passing the proposed retroactive modification, in my opinion, would place a significant financial burden upon us to bring the fence into conformance, without which the usability of our property would be significantly altered for the worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Air. Anyone else? Please come up. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Donnie Zardani. I'm a former neighbor to the Delairs on Bluffs Edge. Now, I live on the west side of town. I constructed the house, I was involved in the process with the city with the permit, et cetera, lived on the lake for seven years. When is it stopped when somebody has to come into your backyard? There is no access. When you, when you, when one of the aldermen stated that she walks through the ravine and walks through the property, you're trespassing, aren't you? What stops somebody? A fence stops somebody. If the city of Lake Forest goes through a strict permit process, I think as Michael Adelman stated, there's some flaws here. I think we need to address this. And what's going to stop this ordinance from creating another ordinance in the community where all of a sudden there's an accessory building that's too close to the ravine? There's a two-car detached garage that now has to not, it's an accessory building that has to be removed. So, when is this going to stop, or when do we have more time? It seems like there's one individual that's being, you know, brought to the attention because of one fence, and most of the people that have come to this, you know, in front of board, et cetera, and addressed issues are people that have trespassed year after year on their property. I mean, one property of a ravine joins the other, there is no common area for a walkway. There's nothing defined, everyone's puzzled, there's been discussions on it. There has to be some, some kind of guidance, there's not enough information. The police department, when they come down to enforce children that are drinking on the ba, on the beach along Bluffs Edge, they don't know the proper information to give out to these individuals. They pass it, pass it by, and they move on. There is not a boundary trail that's for the average community, citizen to walk through. It's stated by the owner of the property that's on his deed of the property that states exactly who can go through and walk on that property and actually enjoy the beach. And there's a limited amount of people, and there's actually, I believe, a hundred-by-100-foot section, if you look at the fence, that was removed per the city before our permit was issued. It was actually marked out, and it actually shows there's a section for a community beach from individuals that have it on their deed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zardani. Well, I think, Bob, go ahead.
Well, let me just throw out a possible option. You've got a couple of options, actually. Number one is if, as you heard, I think, from Alderman Palmer, if you just think there's a bad idea, kill it tonight and be done with it. If you think that it has merit, but there's, what I'm hearing is some members are really concerned about the amortization portion of it. One option to follow up on Alderman Adelman's suggestion would be to adopt first reading with or without the amortization, direct staff to defer issuing and processing any permits for any work in the ravines and bluffs, send the matter back to the plan commission, I think in response to Alderman Reisenberg. The plan commission dealt with this very late in the evening and probably didn't spend enough time processing it. I think we've heard a couple of other issues here that have been raised by city council members that we can ask the plan commission to sort through, take our time so that when it comes back to you in hopefully final form, that it's been well discussed, well thought out, and addresses many of the points and the issues that you've raised here this evening.
That's kind of where I was going to take this. It sounds like we've got a lot of different-
I should have let you go first then.
We do have the ability, we do have the ability to table this until the next meeting and let everyone think about it somewhat, and I'd be glad to make a motion to table this until the next meeting for discussion and action.
I don't want it tabled because I'm in support of the second, and if we table it, then permits could be issued in the interim. So, in my mind, I don't want to have a table.
I'm in support of the second without the amortization period if that carries the day.
I have a comment. I've heard kind of a recurring theme, and I've known Mr. Zardani for a long time, and with all due respect, I think the where does it stop question, I would like to point out that it never will stop, and it won't stop for a lot of good reasons. The historic preservation ordinance was voted on by city council, approved by the voters of Lake Forest, and it impacted the ability of hundreds of homes to be able to change their, to have what's going on. There were dozens of properties that were divisible that no longer became divisible because they had to have access to a road. You had to have a little bit more than three acres to make two lots. This is the, the nature of, of community protection and the protection of public good and the protection of community character, that these things change on a frequent and regular basis and impact people. Like, a very careful gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, I apologize, but the gentleman at, on Bluffs Edge, there's, this is not an unusual occurrence, and it's not an epidemic, and it's not a problem. It's a problem on an individual basis, and it impacts individuals, but it's, it's the nature of public policy. I just would like to make that, this is not a, a disease getting out of control, it's a process that naturally occurs, and for the most part, most people benefit from it.
Everybody benefits.
Well, yeah.
Taylor would like, I'd like to look for a motion tonight to, as Bob suggested, approve first reading and send us back to plan commission for considerate, further consideration, discussion, allow us to provide some more feedback. That motion can or can't, it's up to the individual that makes that motion, include or exclude the amortization period, it's up to them. But I would look for a motion to approve first reading and send it back to plan commission.
So moved.
Second-
With the proviso that the, that the amortization period be separated from the, from what's being granted first reading.
What do you mean by separated? Do you mean removed?
Part of the discussion. The whole thing is discussed by plan and return.
In terms of granting first reading, the specifics of the ordinance don't need to be included. So, if you're granting first reading and then sending it back to the plan commission with a moratorium until it comes back, that could be the motion. If someone made a motion to waive first reading and go forward, that's when we would remove, remove or add particular language.
I just want to make sure that there's some form of moratorium put in, whatever we do, to prevent a rush for permits in the interim.
Yes. That is, that is included in George's motion that I seconded, I hope.
Okay.
So, what's the significance of approving the first reading then? It doesn't have any teeth, it's not an ordinance, right?
It, it, it doesn't have any teeth, but now the public would be on notice in terms of an estoppel issue. So, if someone came in with a permit tomorrow, there would be now official notice with the approval of first reading and the remand to plan commission with the moratorium in place, they would be deemed to have noticed, so they could not come in, get a permit, and, or make a claim for damages if they were trying to get a permit, and, and were denied and incurred costs through that denial somehow.
All right, we do have a motion on the table with a second.
Could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote, Biddy, please.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Alderman Adelman.
Nay.
Six-two, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. So, that will go back to plan commission for further discussion. Next item on the agenda, new business, discussion on liquor sales at gas stations. This issue was before the finance committee earlier this evening, and we did engage in a great deal of discussion about it. There certainly is a great deal of pros and cons on both sides. Chief Health was in and gave us a little color and some opinions from his side. I think we wanted to again present it this evening to council for further discussion. I think we also may have someone who'd like to address the council on that matter as well, and perhaps we do that now. Sir, you would like to come up, state your name and address, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Lombardis. I'm the owner of the Shell located at 193 East Deer Path, just outside in the southwest corner. I'm in hopes of your support of obtaining a liquor license for my business. It was tabled and discussed back recent, about, in 2006, and I had some support, but they were hesitant that we were known as a dry community. And now, as we all know, there's, Walgreens has a liquor license, CVS, Chief's Pub, and other businesses that are in hopes of moving forward themselves. So, I'm just here this evening for your support and being able to get specific A1 license, which is even beer and wine, and hearing your thoughts and what concerns you may have.
Any questions while we have you up here?
I think the question is, how would you secure, if you had this, how would you secure the facility? Because now, one of the concerns that was expressed was that a group of people could walk in there and you're shorthanded, and they could pilfer it, people underage and other things could, could steal, and then we'd get people on our streets that were drinking and were underage.
Oh, with any business with that. I mean, I have several staff that are always on duty, not just one cashier. And with your, you know, support with this, I would have, you know, specific measures that would stop that from occurring at best. I would place the liquor in the southeast side coolers, which are closest to the cashiers. I could even put alarms on when the cooler doors would open, and then even the last aisles, which not, which would be cases as opposed to single grabbing items. I think that would be a good way of not having an issue like that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. This issue is not before the council tonight for a vote, just simply for discussion. You know, perhaps we give it some further consideration relative to any restrictions, limitations that if we were to be willing to entertain that, that we would place on the establishment. And I think probably makes sense to give that some more consideration in the coming days and weeks. Makes sense, Bob?
Certainly, as mentioned earlier, the city attorney is engaged right now in what I would call a comprehensive rewrite of our liquor ordinance. So, if it's the pleasure of the city council, we will continue along those lines. I would ask that if any of you have any thoughts, ideas, suggestions regarding specific language that might be included, whether it's for this petition or any other liquor holder in town, we would really encourage any thoughts and ideas that you might have, so we bring back an ordinance that meets with your approval.
Just a quick comment on this gentleman's request for discussion. Would it make sense to suggest to the petitioner that a physical plan be drawn up so that we're not working with a thing next to the cooler by the cases sort of description? Which, I know you understand what you're talking about, but we may not, so.
Right, and we would be more than happy, whether it's the chief or our public safety officer, to go over there, meet with the gentleman, look at the site, come up with some suggestions so that we could bring back to the city council that if it was the pleasure of the city council to grant the license, that we could do so in the most secure way possible.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay, thank you. Moving on, next item under new business, approval of the Route 60 median landscape plan presented by Chuck Myers, superintendent of Parks and Forests. Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Given the late hour, I will make my presentation very brief so that you can ask any questions that you might have. I did meet with the public works committee earlier this evening to discuss the options available and also the staff's recommendation. You have received a lot of this information, but just to quickly go over it, option A is the plan that has different treatment of each of the, of the medians. The far west median would have just grass and trees. The central median would have this mass plantings with group trees and grass edging. And then, the far east one, the small one, would just have grass. The plan has been presented to the state for approval. Just today, we have received conditional approval on it. We have to fulfill a couple of details on that, but essentially, we have approval right now. The other thing I wanted to emphasize on each of these options, staff feels it's important that we have irrigation and also soil improvements. We think that this is critical in sustaining plant, plant life for any of these medians. The cost of option A is $230,000. Option B is very similar to A, however, it adds a two-foot-high wall. You can see it in the picture. Sorry, the picture's kind of small, it's hard to see, but this is a median up in Gurnee. And it is pretty heavily planted down here, you can't see it again, but it's a very attractive option. It does cost a bit more, it would add $175,000 to the cost of the project. It would also require us starting the process of state approval over. We would basically have to design this and resubmit that to the state. We are told that it would be a fairly lengthy process. The state, actually, state roads in Lake County have not received one of these wall approvals in the last 20 years at least, since the permit person has been there. He said that they would review it, but they would not guarantee its approval. This one happens to be a county road in Gurnee, and it was put in just a couple of years ago, and it does perform very successfully. And finally, we added option C. This is something that we've discussed in the past. This is the minimalist approach, I guess you could say. Uh, it would just be, uh, taking what we have and making improvements to the soil, uh, adding irrigation, planting new trees, smaller canopy trees, and new turf. That option, uh, would require minimal change on the permit. I don't think that would be a major issue, uh, but also, we would again recommend irrigation and soil improvement. And that option is $153,000. Uh, staff, after working with a number of stakeholders, uh, the Civic Beautification Committee, the Route 60 Beautification Committee, uh, a number of homeowners groups, the academy, we have concluded that the best option, uh, that we feel would fit this area is option A. Uh, and we are recommending, uh, that, uh, we go with that one at the cost of 230,000. Further, we're asking, uh, if you approve that, uh, that we pass the resolution. That is the agreement that the state requires as part of the permit that says we will not only install this plan, but will also, uh, be maintaining it. So those are the two things, if you have any questions.
I have a question. Is, is there a projected difference in the predictability of survival of any of these three options? In other words, is there one that you could say, if we did this one, the likelihood that this one will survive is much better than the others?
Uh, I would, the key, when you said that, for me, would be much better. I would say that, all these considered, the wall would have all of the factors that would have the best chance of success. However, I think the difference between option A, which we're proposing, and the wall, I don't know that it's as significant as the other things that we're doing, as in the soil improvement and the irrigation. Those are key things. So I, I think that you have to weigh out the cost, obviously.
Sure. How about the difference between A and C?
A and C on sustainability?
Yeah.
Um, I have put money, it, part of that $153,000 is soil improvement. So I would say that the difference between those two, again, uh, the plants are different. We are choosing plants that are salt-hardy, but the risk is greater to losing some of them. The grass on the outside, it's virtually the same between option A and B.
And how about the trees?
Uh, the trees are mostly in the center. I, I think we could see some damage to it.
Any difference between A and C and the trees?
On A and C, um, I would say, uh, not a significant difference.
Okay. Can you, can you give us an idea of what the sum total cost of the first two median renovations was?
I'm, I'm not following your question.
Okay, so these medians have been planted several times previously.
Yes, yeah.
It costs money to do it each time.
Correct.
How much money have we flushed so far?
Okay, I can, I can speak to the second time. Uh, I came on at the end of that, and it was about $82,000 that was spent. And that was what is out there now, is that prairie, uh, type planting that's there. That was about $80,000. Before that, I can't really speak to.
Is, um, option A and option C, is there really any difference between them except the plants that you're putting in the middle? In other words, if we did option C and let it sit for two years and it actually survived, the trees lived, the grass grows, could that be converted into option A with private funds subsequently? Cause it, cause they look, to be honest with you, they look the same to me, with the exception of the plants in the middle. The west is the same, the east is the same. And the one in the middle looks like option C with the exception of some different types of plants in the middle.
It is much more extensive. Uh, the center median is the focal point. I would agree that the two end ones don't look a lot different with plan A or C. The central one, we were weighing in the aesthetics on that, and we were saying that, we were charged with making something that had seasonal, uh, different, you know, something that would be appealing throughout the season, something that would look nice as a gateway to the community. That's the big difference I see. The two ends, I would agree with you, they're very similar on either plan, but the center one is much more involved in the planting.
Last question, I promise. It's really true that we're looking at options A and C, isn't it? Because option B is not going to be approved by the state. It's, there's an obstruction that they're concerned about in terms of being able to cross the median if they needed to, cite obstructions and other things. So the reality is, if, if we didn't have option C, we'd really only have option A. Um, because, let's face it, option B, it's not going to get done. And there is some concern that we do this before the event that occurs next year.
Yeah, I would say that option B is possible, but unlikely. Uh, and, but I would say that it's very unlikely that it'll be done this summer. That I can tell you for sure, with the permit process, that it would take. I don't see any way that we would complete it this summer, or realistically this year, if we got approval.
Thanks.
Are there big differences in the maintenance cost between option A and option C? I mean, the grass would have to be mowed, I assume, and I don't know what the plants would have to have done to them.
Yeah, there is a difference. Um, we, there is things like weeding. Weeding is a little bit more difficult in a planted median like that. So, um, and there would be plant replacement, but mainly it's weeding. And, uh, the type of plants that we're picking, as they get established and with the irrigation that will keep them thriving, we believe that the weeds will become less of a problem as we go. Uh, so there is, there is an increase, obviously on option A, it's just mowing, but we do have to get out there and mow it. So it's not maintenance-free by any means.
Have you tried to calculate what the difference might be?
Uh, we did do a, sorry, I don't know if I have the chart here. The maintenance cost on the, the annual maintenance cost for the trees with, uh, I'm sorry, the grass with small trees was about 4,000 annually. Um, the price for the, uh, with the planting in the middle, I believe, raised that to $6,000 annually. So it's not a huge difference.
Has anyone explored, if we are concerned about salt damage, is there some sort of temporary thing we could put up? Uh, like low plastic or flexible panels or something during the winter that, you know, would protect them against salt? Would that, is that a cost feasible?
It actually, it has been considered. I, I, we haven't come up with anything that was acceptable, mainly because of the look. It is difficult with the heavy salty to keep it off of there, but, um, I, I know our, um, our staff has asked about, you know, is there any barrier? We haven't come up with any. We do some protection at other places. You see us putting the burlap up. It's not really practical there, though. Uh, so our, a, a lot of what we're, uh, looking at is that irrigation in the spring, being able to wash some of that salt. Hopefully, that's going to have a, a pretty big impact, we believe it will.
Okay, thank you.
Chuck, the irrigation's going to cover all three medians?
It is, yes. That's what it's going to.
From end to end, so thorough irrigation?
Yeah.
Okay, so the question I have then is, the plantings in the center median, what happens with those at the end of the growing season? Do those get mowed down, or do they stay there and they pick up where they left off the following spring?
Well, actually, a lot of them are being left out there. There are some ornamental grasses and things. That does provide a nice look in the winter. So we wouldn't, uh, typically, you knock that kind of stuff down, uh, in the spring, we would knock it down. Obviously, um, the grasses would have to be cut back, you don't leave it. You could, but in a form of landscaping, you'd want to knock it down. I wouldn't do it until the spring, though.
Right, cause my concern was that when they, the state hurls the snow off those blades, that's going to knock it down. But we're not concerned about that because you'd knock it down in the spring anyhow and let it regenerate.
We would.
Okay.
I have a question, uh, following Alderman Tac's line of questioning. Um, we had a, a side view of option C. We have an aerial view of option A, we have three aerial views of option A, no, no picture of C in our packet, but there was one on the screen. And, and following the questioning that he hit, where's the $80,000 difference?
Between the...
153 and 230, between A and C.
Uh, well, plant, plant material is about 40,000 of that. Uh, that's, that's a big portion of it.
I thought all the plant material for option A was 40,000.
Uh, yeah, it would be the, yeah, all the plant material, everything in the center median. The, plus the trees, the trees on the far west end.
So it's 80,000 in plant material?
Uh, no, it's, here.
Uh, cause I, the construction of, of A, and now I'm...
So...
I don't know how to, okay, I don't know how to compare a side view with a top view. What is it, what does A look like from the side? Is it a curb, or is it a short wall, or?
Well, no, A, A, the one that we're proposing, is slightly burned, and I hesitate to use the word burned, I don't want you to think of a mound. It is bringing the profile up. What's that?
I have one in my yard, so.
Okay. So it is bringing it up, and part of that is to reduce excavation costs. We want to have...
And that's in A.
That's in A, right. And, and some in C as well. I, I toned down the amount on C, knowing that it's a minimal approach. We still want to do, we want to add soil. The excavation costs, you can see here, uh, in A, it's 91.
And in C?
And I think I sent you the costs on option C are quite a bit less. Uh, but I added in $30,000 for soil replacement.
Do you have this, this page for C?
I, I do not.
This is the problem, I think, is...
That, that's what I had said, it was sent out in an email, uh, after the packet. Um, but as you can, here is the planting, 35,000. That's including the tray, uh, the trees on all the medians and the major planting in the center median.
Are we going to ask for public comment there, comment?
Sir, I can't.
Yeah, I just don't...
Anyone, anyone out there who brought it up? Anyone in the public out there that would like to make comment tonight? Yes, come on up. Please state your name and your address, please?
Thank you, my name's Joanne Desmond. I live at 1681 Yale Court, and with some of the board of, members of the board of directors of Academy Woods, I'm here to express our support for option A. We've waited 13 years, we've worked for 13 years with the staff and, in the hopes of finally getting something done at the entrance to Lake Forest, and we think that this will help a lot. We hope for your support, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desmond. Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Ron Fizinski, I live at 1810 Princeton Court in Academy Woods as well. And we moved into Academy Woods in, um, 1995. And pretty much every day, I leave Academy Woods, drive to the, uh, tollway and go to work and come back. And I can tell you that even today, as I, as I do that, there's nothing along that stretch of road that welcomes me to Lake Forest. There isn't even a sign, thank God, honestly. There's no sign there that says, "Welcome to Lake Forest," because it doesn't really look too welcoming. Now, I know that we have this big golf tournament coming, and that's certainly a, a reason to consider doing something, but I don't think, I would like to see on the Golf Channel, a picture of Route 60 coming into Lake Forest, the way it looks today. I don't think it's going to save very much for the community. And I, I agree with Joanne's point that for approximately, um, 12 or 13 years, we've had meetings and discussions and ideas of how to improve the look of Route 60 to make it look like it really belongs to Lake Forest, and, um, we really haven't gotten very far. So hopefully, with your support, option A will get approved and we can get something done, make it look a lot better than it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just go on up.
My name is Terry Desmond. I live at 1681 Yale Court with my wife, and, uh, we've lived there 17 years. Um, I'm retired now, but, uh, my business that we had, uh, was located in, first of all, Burr Ridge and then Lyle. And so I've done a lot of traveling over those 17 years, driving from Lake Forest south. And every large community of any size, let's say over 15,000, has a state highway that generally runs right through the middle of it, like Route 60. That's the way that people come into those communities. And I would say the overwhelming majority of the communities that I have traveled through, and I did a lot of driving around, have beautiful entrance areas coming into their community, Burr Ridge being one of them, Hinsdale, uh, Lyle, Illinois. If you drive right down Route 83, driving south, uh, you see a tremendous, uh, buildup of the medians with both hedges and trees and grass. And as Ron said, it's, it's, it's kind of sad as you come into Lake Forest, thinking that this is one of the great communities of our state. And, uh, it, it just has not been a, a very beauti- beautifying, uh, statement, you know, you might say, on the city's part. You know, uh, Route 22, as you wa, drive in now into, uh, Highwood, it's all been redone within the last year. It's beautiful what they've done there, and they're maintaining it. Um, you know, we who live in Academy Woods, and I think the same might be true, Bob, tell me if I'm wrong, about Conway Park, we pay municipal taxes as everyone else does. However, our streets are built such that we have to maintain them ourselves. There's no snow plowing by the city. We maintain, and, uh, anytime there's damage, we take care of it ourselves. And, and so, we feel that maybe those of us that live on the west side of the, of the, uh, city should, uh, be recognized some way, at least with the way that we enter our, our community. And I encourage you also to consider option A, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. Any other comments or questions from council? Bob? Ms. Mayor, just, uh, two quick things to add. I think all of you received, uh, I forwarded to you an email letter from Scotty Wood, the president of Academy Woods. I did want to, he asked that the letter be read into the record, and we'll make sure that the, his letter is added to the minutes of the, this evening's meeting, but effectively, uh, echoing some of the comments which you've already heard, um, the Academy Woods Homeowners Association does support option A. We also heard, uh, in a phone call from, uh, Stonebridge Homeowners Association, they also are in, uh, support of option A. Uh, Alderman Moore, in response to your question, and thank goodness for iPad so you can go back and look at emails, um, in response to, I think, the original question that came from Alderman Tac with the, uh, cost differential for option, uh, A versus option C, really to pick up on Chuck's point, the big differential was in, uh, the excavation, which is up there for 91,000, because the only thing that was in there was basically adding about, uh, I think about $45,000 for so, additional soil. So there really wasn't any excavation cost there, and then the balance being in the difference of material in the center median would be the two component cost differentials.
Just one additional comment, and, you know, to put it very plainly, I, I'm in support of option A. I, I want to see this cleaned up, it's an entry to the city, and even though I'm in Ward 1, I'm not a west side resident, um, I'm proud of the community and I want to show off the community, uh, this fall and times beyond. The one thing I'm going to ask the city, though, uh, clearly is where we're cleaning up this long overdue need, uh, there's other entry areas of the city that I'd like to see the city maybe in the future address, be it down Sheridan Road or other areas on Waukegan Road. Again, uh, I want everyone's impression of Lake Forest to be favorable, and I'd encourage the city to examine other areas in the future.
I will say, as the third ward, Alderman, from the west side, I've got to support this 100%. Um, I, I talked to the people from Conway Farms, I talked to the people from the Golf Club, I talked to the people from Stonebridge, I talked to the people from Academy, from Academy Woods. And I, I think a minimal, minimalist approach is the wrong thing to do. Uh, if we're going to do it, for goodness sakes, let's do it right. It really is the gateway from the west. It really is the gateway from the west. I mean, the gateway is not 176. The gateway is not Route 22, Half Day Road, which looks incredibly beautiful and really points out the, what we haven't done in Route 60. So, I obviously am in 100% support for option A.
Just as a comment, my vote on this is entirely determined by the people that I've talked to. And I talked to people through the course of my business who live in Lake Forest. I talked in excess of 20 people who live here. I don't know where in town they live, so I can't distribute them west or east. I can honestly say I didn't have a single person who thought we should spend any more money on this median strip than we had to. Many people suggested that we pave it. They know that we've planted it several times and it's failed. And so, for me, in a way of representing those people who talked to me and who answered the question, I'm opposed to it, not because I'm personally opposed to it. I think option A would look nice. I think it's wrong to assume that option C would not look nice, because I think option A and option C are the same, with the exception of a few plants in the middle. It's not like you're going to take care of one and not take care of the other. There's no survivability difference that anybody has been able to tell me about, unlike the last thing we did, which frankly, looked better once they mowed it down than it ever did when it was living. So, that's my point. I think that everybody has to realize that there are people here from the west side who are obviously very invested in this, but there are very many people in this town who don't think we should spend much more money on this.
Any other comments? If not, there is a recommendation, Mike?
Yeah, sorry. I've got mixed emotions on it. The first month when I took office in 2011, this came up, and I think we appropriated $88,000. And I remember questioning that. But my concern, quite honestly, had to do with the salt and the state ruining it. I don't know that that's necessarily the reason why it failed, and that $88,000 in prior dollars were flushed down the toilet. I think maybe it failed because it was prairie grasses in a drought season, and when you mow it, it really looked bad. Option C's got irrigation in it. I mean, you could take out irrigation, you could take out a lot of stuff and just throw sod on there, you know, reseed it. There's got to be tons of grass-only medians in Illinois that don't have irrigation that do just fine. So, if you really wanted to compare bare bones to option A, you could take out a lot of stuff and maybe get it down under six figures, down into, you know, the $60,000 to $75,000 range. But then the question in my mind, is that the right thing to do? Because it is somewhat of a gateway to West Lake Forest. So, there's a lot of good arguments for option A. I just feel, man, will we have egg on our face if it's not here a year from now. And Half Day Road's no asset test. It's beautiful. I see it all the time, because I live in the fourth ward, but who knows what it's going to look like next year?
It's dirt right now.
Well, no, the stuff east of Waukegan is beautiful.
No, but it's just, but it's all grass. There's nothing, it's grass with dirt in the middle.
Yeah.
They have trees over at the...
So, I don't know what the right answer is.
I drive that twice a day.
Nope, no ash, no ash.
I agree with Mike. I think option A is beautiful, and I agree with everyone's comments on it. You know, I would like it to look as nice as possible. I have no problem with option A, if it works. If it doesn't work, then it's a waste of a lot of money.
And if I could just jump back on that? The thought I had months ago was, okay, let's get the private stakeholders to fund it, and we'll promise to reimburse them if it survives for multiple seasons. But otherwise, we're bearing the risk of its failure, and then we look bad, because it won't be the first time it failed on us.
Can I ask a question? Knowing the numbers now, and we've looked at so many of these, if the difference is excavation, the reason for excavation is to get rid of the bad soil and put in lots of good soil. It's like in $91,000, well, what's the other bill for excavation? If you had them both up, because I can't have them at the same time?
C had no excavation. Yours?
I added 30 at the end for additional soil.
Additional soil. So, the difference is $60,000 here.
And we would have to do some excavation just to get rid of the existing plant material, minimal.
So, 60 of the 80 of the difference is getting rid of bad soil and adding more good soil, which is very expensive, but it's practically an insurance policy, so we're not looking at the fourth time that we do it. Is that a fair enough assessment? We kind of heard a little bit of that this, earlier today in Public Works.
Yeah, and actually...
So, they are pretty much the same, except this one's got better dirt.
Right. And I am a strong believer in the soil. And I told you the same thing at Town Line Park when we were dealing with some of the problems there. It all comes down to the soil.
Did that, that worked well, right?
I don't know why I brought that up. No, it worked well.
But I mean, the plugs worked and...
It did. The process we did out there worked well. So, I'll always tell you that the soil is the key to getting things working right. However, I would add in this case irrigation, just because you're in an area that is not going to hold enough water naturally, and it's a harsh, dry area. So, between those two, that's what I'm saying is different.
They're both irrigated. One's got 20,000 more in plants and 60,000 more in soil than the other one, just bolstering its durability. Is that...
It is. It's make, I think it's taking a lot of the risks that you're concerned about, and rightfully so. I don't blame you for looking at the past and wondering what's different. You know, I've done the soil samples, and it's clay, and it's not soil that's going to allow plants to do well. So, I think getting the right soil in there is a tremendous help.
So, what you're suggesting, then, is C really is an option where you're proposing it, and yet, the survivability is less because you haven't included proper soil in it? Is that what I'm hearing? Because that's really what you're saying, is that the difference between A and C is that C is improperly prepared, inadequately prepared, higher likelihood of failure. And yet, that's not what you said. What you told me was that C and A had equal survivability, they were properly planned for what was being planted in them. Now, if they're not, then they're not. But if they have equal probabilities, then the difference really is whether or not you like the plants in the middle and you think they're worth an extra $80,000. But isn't it true that the risk of failure is greatest for those plants you put in the middle, rather than the grass or the trees that are going to be in both of them?
The risk is greatest on the grass. However, to clarify, the difference between the two, it's a level of degree of replacement. When I said that it was being burned slightly, what I'm doing, I'm not going as deep with excavation to save money. I'm adding $30,000 with the soil. I am cutting it down, and I'm adding soil. That's not including a lot of excavation. When I, this plan is $91,000, because when you excavate, you have to add more soil in. Soil's expensive. This is an engineered soil. It's going to cost a lot more. It's the degree of risk. The difference between A and C is, it is, there is a difference there in my mind, partly the trees. I think the excavation needs to be deeper there, too. So, it's, there is a difference between A and C in sustainability, as far as the plant material goes. I don't think it's, I didn't want to overstate it before. I think that the approach on C is a pretty good, you know, it's a good addition. It's not as much as I would like to do, but it's a good addition of soil. It's topping off what's there. Not as good as the $90,000 and getting a lot of soil.
There is a recommendation out there that's been presented to approve option A. Anyone care to make a motion to do so, or someone else?
So moved.
Second.
I think we need a roll call vote, please. Bert, ready?
Alderman Reisenberg, second by all.
And I'm sorry, in that recommendation, did that also include the approval of the IDOT maintenance resolution?
Alderman Reisenberg?
What?
Does that also include the...
Yes, 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 yes. What am I supposed to say? Am I supposed to say yes?
Shake your head.
Yes, clarify. You've got to coach me occasionally. I'm new here, you know.
Alderman Waldeck.
Hi.
Alderman Novit.
Hi.
Alderman Pendleone.
Hi.
Alderman Moore.
Hi.
Alderman-Tack.
Nope.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Palmer.
Hi.
Alderman Adelman.
Just remember who your friends are.
7-1, motion carries.
Thank you, Betty, very much.
I told you so, reserve.
Thank you. Final item, thank you, Chuck, very much. Additional items for council consideration? Anything else before anyone falls over? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Good evening.
[INAUDIBLE].
5:45 a.m.